Turning the pages will be inconvenient. Where is it in the meeting? They said turning the pages will be inconvenient, but I think it'll be worth it.
It's hot, isn't it? These lights are... These lights are... I'm usually cold, and I'm actually not.
Don't worry about being cold up here anyways. Lights are warm.
Right, so...
Yeah, that's true.
They are warm, wow.
Guys, for the questions for the districts, it goes Democrats, unaffiliated Republicans, okay? And Democrats, unaffiliated Republicans is the order of those. And then for that large, it goes Democrat, Republicans.
Just a one...
So B U R, and then D R for at-large.
Get a yellow card halfway and a red one to stop.
I usually can't see.
So what do we do?
I can't see.
I can't see. The longer we're sitting here, the more this is getting to where I'm sick. Look at each other, it's better for now.
There it is. Somebody might try to give you hands. That's confusing.
Three. A high production...
Yeah, I can't.
Camera.
Check one, two. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2013 Enfield Youth Vote Debate for the Town Council for the town of Enfield here at Rico Fermi High School. My name is Peter Garcia, and I will be the moderator for tonight's debate. I am also joined by our panel from left to right. We have Jacob Michaelitz, Matthew Strohny, Christopher Gluttenberg, and Katie Saltskiver. We will begin tonight's debate with the district positions for the Town Council. And from left to right, let me just identify them for you. For the Democrats, for the first district, we have Mrs. Jill Craviez... Craviez, Craviez, I'm sorry. For the second district, Mr. William Edgar. For the third district, Mr. Charles Ladd. For the fourth district, Mr. Ed Denny. For the unaffiliated, we... For District Two, we have Mr. Donald Christmas. And for the Republicans, we have for the fourth district, Mr. Tom Kinsler. For the third district, Mr. Bill Lee. For the second district, Mr. Dominic Alamo. And for the first district, Mr. Joe Bosco. Before we begin with the debate, I would ask that everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will begin the debate first with one-minute introductions by each candidate and then move on to the question rounds. This debate will have two rounds consisting of a question for each candidate per round. The first round will consist of questions that have been prepared by the students in the Fermi Youth Vote Committee. And the second round will contain questions provided by members of the audience and also asked by our panel. Our chairs will be collecting questions from the audience while the first round is proceeding. You can ask a question to any candidate, and if there is no question by the audience for a specific candidate, there will be a substitute question from our panel. Our... Or, uh, I'm sorry. You... Each candidate will get two minutes to answer each question. And after each question, the opposing party or parties will get a chance to make a one-minute rebuttal. And candidates will be notified from the orchestra pit when they have thirty seconds remaining and when their time is ended. Candidates, I would like to ask that you use proper decorum and abide by all times allotted. And I would ask the audience to please turn off all cell phones and refrain from applause or any kind of noise until the end of the debate so that each candidate gets the appropriate time to answer. So, we will now begin with the opening statements. And Mrs. Craviez.
It's Craviez, thank you. Thank you, Fermi High School Youth Vote. I really appreciate the time you've put into this, and I'm glad that you've given the candidates a chance to have this debate. I have lived in Enfield practically my whole life, and I graduated from this very high school in 1988. I have a degree in sociology, and I am a civil servant for the Commonwealth Massachusetts. I serve now as a secretary for the Enfields Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. I care about the community and I want the best for it. I have no agenda but rather want to serve the residents' best interests. I'm running for District One's Town Council seat, and I'm looking forward to serving our town by being the voice of the people. I became interested in the Town Council many years ago when I wanted sidewalks in my neighborhood. I went to Town Council meetings and spoke many times and learned a lot about how the process works and how important it is to have the council listen and hear the needs and wants of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Edgar?
Yes. To all of you, many thanks. I am running as an incumbent for District Two. I'm a lifelong resident of Enfield. I was educated in the Enfield school system. I graduated from Enfield High, cum laude. I served in the United States Army. Then I attended American International College. I worked for thirty-nine years for the Enfield Police Department. I worked for twenty-one years... Twenty-two years plus as a veterans advisor for a local... For a large veterans organization. I still do volunteer work. I'm a widener. I have seven children, sixteen grandchildren, and thirteen great-grandchildren. I listen to my constituents. I listen to others out of my district when I'm called.
Thank you very much.
I believe in equality education. I'm honest. And I want to transform government and, believe all, I believe in the right to vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edgar. Mr. Ladd?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight you'll hear sixteen different people explain why and how they will try to make Enfield a better place for all of our citizens. Hopefully, at the end of this debate, you'll have a clearer picture of who we are and how we think. But first, I'd like to thank the students of the youth vote, students and the youth vote organizers, for providing this opportunity to debate and air out our thoughts and beliefs. I'd like to thank my wife and daughters and the Democratic team for their incredible support. My first priority, if elected, to the Town Council from District Three will be to provide the most open and transparent representation that I could possibly can. I also plan to work closely with the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager of Community Development, working with them to make Enfield a more desirable place for businesses to settle, grow, and thrive. Thank you for this opportunity for each of us to present our ideas and goals.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ladd. Mr. Denny?
I'm Ed Denny. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm a retired First Sergeant from the Connecticut Army National Guard as First Sergeant for thirty-four years. I've lived here my whole life. I was a retiree from Unisource Paper twenty-six years. I was on the Veterans Monument Committee here in Enfield. I've been a baseball coach for ten years with my grandchildren. I coached before that. I'm a North Thompsonville Fire Commissioner for the last seven years. I live here in Enfield on Aloha Drive with my two grandchildren that I'm the primary guardian for, and my lovely wife Barbara, who was in the audience today. I think I have the taxpayers of Enfield and the residents listening and talking to me, people at my Route Five headquarters from ten to twelve every single day. They're telling me what they want and how to go about getting it. That is that Dunkin' Donuts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denny. Mr. Bosco, you are up next.
Yes, I want to thank everybody that's involved in the youth vote and the opportunity to debate. I am a lifelong resident of Enfield. I have roots going back in the town of Enfield. I have a real passionate... Passion for the town of Enfield. I truly love the town of Enfield. I've been a district councilman for six years. Anytime anybody needs me, they just call me right at my shop, and they have my ear. I am probably one of the most accessible councilmen there. And I've always had best interest at District One and the town of Enfield in mind. And if elected again, I always will have the best interest in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bosco. And Mr. Alamo, you are up next.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My parents were immigrants to this country. They came here with hopes and beliefs, America, and unlimited potential. I lived the American dream growing up and also being in business, but I have some concerns. Here are some. I'm concerned for the families of this town who are struggling to pay the taxes, pay their mortgages, and stay in their homes. Last week, the Hartford Current published a story about a woman right here in Enfield in town who had her bank account cleaned out by the State Tax Department and was left struggling to feed her family. The people of this town are struggling to survive. They need a councilman who will put their interests first, not sell their down-the-river to sweetheart deals. I'm concerned for the small business here in this town. I'm in regular contact with the business people of this town, and many of them are hanging on for a thread. There are too many empty storefronts just on Enfield Street alone. I want to ensure that we provide adequate resources to ensure the public safety of the community. We are assured to retain the police officers and hire them, train in Enfield, and to keep them attritioned, left with the police department understaffed at ten offices at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamo? Mr. Lee, you are up next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Lee. I've been a lifelong resident of Enfield, actually a lifelong resident of District Three. I also graduated here from Fermi High School in 1988. I'm a graduate of Eastern Connecticut State University with a degree in Communications and Public Policy, which doesn't do you any good, really, until you get your feet wet. And it was an experience with Ed Allen several years ago now, asking Mr. Allen about the Hazerville Institute that got me interested in getting involved in town government and finding a way to really finish some of the things that we've started around Enfield and really help the town map a path to the future for the coming generations. So I look forward to the debate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. And Mr. Kinsler?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank first you fine folks for putting on this debate. It's going to be an interesting evening, and we hope to get across some of our points and educate the people out there in the public that had questions about us. I would like to thank my wife and children for letting me do this for the last two years serving as Town Councilman for District Four. I've been in the town myself for twenty years. I call it home. My wife has lived in this town since she was born. I've served on the Thompsonville Little League, the Fourth of July Town Celebration Committee, of course, the Enfield Town Council, and the Enfield Dog Park Action Committee. And I do these things because I care. I care about our people, and I look at myself as someone who is looking out for the residents. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kinsler. Mr. Christmas?
Hello, my name is Donald Christmas. I've been... Lived in Enfield most of my life. As I got older, I got my... I bought my first house in the Thompsonville section of town. I've been there almost eleven years, and I have grown to adore that little town. What made me want to run for office is because I believe our town is a village. When you come into Enfield, you see the city Thompsonville Village. Think that our... A little part of town is becoming more of a city than a village. As you can tell, that I'm not a suit-and-tie guy. I go to work every day. I'm a regular person, like, when I come out of the neighborhood. I don't have all these glorious backgrounds. I'm just a hard worker. I got four kids. I got a wife that I support. And I think that with my input in the Town Council that I can maybe enlighten them what it's like to be a worker down in Thompsonville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to the questions, and the first question will go to Mrs. Craviez, which will be asked by our panelist Chris.
Mrs. Craviez, according to your candidate profile, you believe that education should be a top priority in Enfield. You have stressed the importance of properly funding our schools and said that you would like to continue the trend the council has set this past year, referring to the 2013-2014 town budget that allocated just over sixty-two point four-six million dollars for our town's public school system. You have also stated that you plan to practice responsible spending if elected. Can you explain how you will help maintain a fair annual budget for the town while continuing to fund our schools to keep them competitive with other districts and make them more attractive to potential residents?
Thank you for your question. I do feel that one of the number-one priorities is that we do fund the Board of Education. In many towns, people look at that first in deciding whether or not they choose to live in a community. So it's really important that we do support our Board of Education. And I was glad to see that we were able to get funding this year that supported, you know, the needs of the Board of Education so that they could move forward and become more competitive with the other communities around us. Going forward with responsible spending, we don't want to forget about all of the other needs of the town at the expense of the Board of Education, so it's important to keep that balance. What we really need to do is make sure that we attract businesses and residents to Enfield so that the revenue comes from a higher pool of people and businesses. We have many empty houses and businesses, so if they're full, we'll have more tax revenue. We won't have to spend more money on taxes, yet we'll be able to support the Board of Education with more money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please hold applause until the end. Thank you. Mr. Bosco, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Well, I think that spending money on education is a very important thing. But also, if you spend money, you have to make sure that it's accountable... Accountable properly. With that in mind, you have to make a balance of what we can afford and what we can't afford. And we have to make sure that the money that we allocate to the schools go to the children, not the administrators, not the teachers. Programs that will help the children get them along.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bosco. The next question will go to Mr. Edgar, and will be read by our panelist Jacob.
Mr. Edgar, Thompsonville was once a thriving center for business and commerce. In the past few decades, we have seen how more businesses are choosing to locate themselves away from Thompsonville into areas of town that are more conveniently located next to Interstate Ninety-One. This transformation has changed the landscape of Thompsonville over the years. Many efforts have been made to revitalize the section of town but have stalled due to lack of proper funding. There is talk of the creation of a new transportation center with the possibility of a train station in Thompsonville. If re-elected, how does the transportation center and rail station fit into your plans to rebuild and revitalize your district? And how do you plan to get the current residents of Thompsonville involved in the process that could essentially change the landscape of their neighborhood forever?
Well, on the first part, I remember it very well when I was a Sarabia community. I lived in it on Windsor Street, and I worked in it. I worked in actually downtown when the ADP was there. Now, what I look... For the first part, to revitalize the town is light rail. Okay, there's a question going right now as to whether to put the second rail line in from Hartford to the Massachusetts line. I believe that that will help, and I testified in the state legislature for that. I think that's one of the first things that will help. When... There's a difference in proper funding, and the proper funding, most of it comes in state grants. So far, they've... The Development Commission from through the town has received three-hundred thousand dollars toward it, and they have another pending three-hundred and fifty thousand for it, which I'm not sure of. There's a move afoot to buy what I call the old International Casket Building and revise it down there. They're in the process of test borings, and test borings around the river and the Connecticut Light Power property. That will help it. But what we need right away is a grant for a train station or stop block similar to what Windsor Locks has south of Ninety-One. That way, when it comes through and we have that in place, we will get more help from the state. I believe that that's critical. Now, the people in Thompsonville, you know, take... Through the Loan Guarantee Committee, can get a low-cost loan or a forgivable loan, excuse me, I should say, up to twenty thousand dollars. Right now, we don't have the funds available, but we've been giving those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar.
And if they keep them ten years, they're forgiven. I'm running over...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edgar. Just a reminder to please speak into the microphones as best you can. Mr. Christmas, you are first with your one-minute rebuttal.
I think the train station would be disastrous for Thompsonville. I don't think that we need it. People that live in Thompsonville are more geared to buying cars and wanting... Want to transport themselves. I don't think there would be a call or a need to use a train station. The few people that could use a train station, we're not very far from Hartford, we're not very far from Springfield, like Mr. Edgar said, we're not very far from Windsor Locks. If anybody really truly needed to use the train station, they can get in the car and drive there and use their train stations. Like I said earlier in my statement that we're a village, we're not a city, and I think that imposing a city like on a village is disastrous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Mr. Alamo, you now have your one-minute rebuttal.
I'd like to apologize when I did not hear Mr. Edgar's response down this side, but as far as Teaville, to start with, my opponent, Mr. Christmas, talks about Teaville. I was born and raised there. I've been there for fifty-nine years. And Teaville, District Two is bigger than Teaville. It's a lot bigger than just Teaville. But we've lost a lot down here in the last fifteen to twenty years. You don't have a police station. We don't have a post office. You don't have a senior center. We lost a lot of buildings. We've had prob... We had an opportunity for a big bakery to come into there that was not moved quick enough. They moved to Agawam. And the train station is very... Is very important, but it's not to touch all, do everything, because you don't want to build the Taj Mahal down there, but we do need a train station. We had down here for over a hundred years. I would start right now, at least replacing the station we had and grow from there, because if we don't do something in the next two years, that station's not going to stop. They're going to drive right by and wave to us. So we do need to stop there.
Thank you very much. We go now to District Three. The question will be for Mr. Ladd, and will be asked by our panelist Katie.
Mr. Ladd, you have stressed the importance of working with the Community Development Team here in Enfield in order to successfully build a more active and equal tax base that supports the needs of our town. What specific challenges do you feel the town currently faces in this regard? And how do you plan to collaborate with the Community Development Team to meet these challenges if elected?
Thank you. I've been on planning and zoning for... Commission for six years now, and the new Community Development Team is very actively seeking new ways to make the town more desirable for business to come in. One of the things businesses likes is the appearance of the town, the parents... They don't want to go into a neighborhood that doesn't look nice because they want their customers to come in and see a business that's attractive. They also want a reasonable tax base, and they want skilled labor. Those are the things you're looking for. We have as nuntuk now training people to do business work and machining work, so therefore, I think that'll help us a lot with getting businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. Mr. Lee, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. I think the question was about how the council can engage with the Planning Department and Development Services Departments. I think this is actually one of the areas where the council of the last few terms has made good progress with the... With town staff and making the redevelopment or the reform of the Development Services Team one of its highest priorities. The Town Manager has recently added a position, an Assistant Town Manager position, that is solely focused on helping Development Services and all the different land use components to that work more in concert with the town's overall goals. So from a council perspective, once we set goals, we're now going to have more direct response from the Town Manager and the departments to help those through. It's going to mean more efficient permitting practices. It's going to be better response to the boards and commissions, and it should help development up and down the line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Next question will be for District Four. The question is for Mr. Denny, and will be asked by Matt.
Could I have a copy of it so I can... I'm not here any while, so...
We'll ask it first and then give a tape.
Mr. Denny, this past year, the Town Council passed a vote...
Mr. Denny, this past year, the town council passed a vote that would put armed security guards in our public schools. This security measure will cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars to implement and maintain on an annual basis. Some citizens, including yourself, have voiced concerns on how this decision was made by citing that residents were not informed of this issue in a timely manner before the vote was passed and did not have enough to say in the matter. Do you support the decision of having armed guards in our schools? And if you are elected to the town council, how will you handle the costly measures such as this that do not require a referendum?
Thank you. First of all, I think it's a two, it's going to be a two-year plan. So what my opinion is about it is that I first thought that the taxpayers should have had more of a voice in implementing this thing. I think we, I think the town council, the school board, everybody that was involved kind of jumped the gun on putting armed guards in schools. I think the cost is more now than it was before because we have the proprio schools and I'm not against that because people, excuse me, pay taxes. But initially, I was kind of leading toward it, but when I seen Sandy Hook, I mean Sandy, Sandy Hook, yeah, that's right. Sandy Hook refused armed guards. Right now, there's an armed guard in the foyer in the building. I think we should have looked at other alternatives. I believe that the police department, some of the police officers and the police union wanted to take on this task and they were refused. And I think that we just jumped in it. With the cost, I think it's going to be astronomical. It's going to be around a million dollars for the first year and possibly about around that for the second year. And I'm not, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Mr. Kinsler, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. Yeah, when the vote came across, I voted for it. And as I said at the time, it was a tough vote. I think that everyone involved had a lot of conscious searching, both from a safety, from a do the right thing standpoint. And if it was done today the same way, I probably would vote yes again, given the same circumstances. I am, and said it at the time, was in favor of maybe doing it a little differently. What we are in favor of, I am, is revisiting it. We have, as Mr. Denny mentioned, a two-year window. We're going to go back and take a look at it. This coming year, we want to take a look at that and see what adjustments, what changes might need to be done. The overall, keep our kids safe. The cost, the cost is 1.2 million for this year with the proprio schools, although dollars, when it comes to safety, really doesn't play into it as much as it would in, say, other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsler.
Thank you.
Your time is complete. We will now move on to the next question for District 1. Mr. Bosco, the question is for you and will be asked by Chris.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Bosco, you have stated in your campaign literature that together, the town council and staff can provide Enfield residents with excellent services at a fair tax rate by efficiently utilizing technology, recycling, and energy-efficient options. As a current town council member, can you explain what programs are currently in place that use these energy-efficient program options and how you plan to expand these options into other programs? Can you also explain how you plan to implement or purchase any new technology while keeping taxes at a fair rate?
I missed, I missed part of your question there, like the half, the end-half of it.
The end-half?
Yeah, the end-half. I just couldn't. The sound system's not very good here.
As a current town council member, can you explain what programs are currently in place that use these energy-efficient options and how you plan to expand these options into other programs? Can you also explain how you plan to implement or purchase any new technology while keeping taxes at a fair rate?
Well, for starters, we already implemented things like the flushless toilet. Can you hear me out there? Flushless toilets in the town hall. So we've been looking at that. We've been changing schools over. I think it's Barnard. We're doing energy-efficient lighting in there. We teamed up with a company named Siemens. So the monies that we are going to spend will be seen in savings. So it really costs the town of Enfield nothing. The implementing the recycling for the tipper barrels, we were sitting in a budget meeting and I said, we wanted to buy another garbage truck. We didn't have the money. So using my head, I says, give me three pieces of equipment we needed. One was a sweeper, one was a roadside mower, and another one was a garbage truck. So when they gave me the prices on the three trucks, we bought a sweeper, we bought a mower, and we bought a garbage truck. We leased all three pieces of equipment. By the time we got done, we had a mower, a sweeper, a garbage truck, and it cost us nothing and we were able to implement the recycling program. That's the kind of stuff that you need to think about because we paid $60,000 a year for the, for the sweeping. We paid $20,000 a year for the mowing. And when we did recycling, we were able to go every two weeks. So when we did that, when you figured it, we technically got our recycling, our mower, our sweeper for nothing. In five years, the vehicles we paid off, we can start something else and have more monies that we don't have tied to a tax dollar. And it's just thinking differently, not thinking the same way. And when you look at something and it's working, you don't stop there. You look again because you may find something else you passed up the first time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bosco. Mrs. Kravitz, you have a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. I definitely do believe going forward, we have to make sure that we do use new resources for energy so that we do save the town money on energy. We have to build new roofs for many of the town's buildings and schools, and we're also building a brand-new school or refurbishing it. And we have to look at those places there and start afresh. We could have solar panels. And we have many experts in our community that know a lot about energy alternatives. And we can use those resources as well and continue on that trend of going greener every day. It's really important that we do do that. We have to think about that now as we move forward and not wait until we've already built new schools and buildings. We need to make sure that we implement it as we go along and not miss any of those opportunities. I'm not sure what you meant, Mr. Bosco, about paying off the trucks that we ended up getting. Sorry.
Thank you. The next question will be for District 2 for Mr. Christmas and the question will be asked by Jacob.
Mr. Christmas, our town has had to make many tough decisions during these difficult economic times. Some argue that our state has implemented too many unfunded mandates during these times, hurting towns like ours by forcing us to take on extra financial costs to meet these demands. How do you plan to work with state officials to help alleviate these financial burdens? And how would your approach differ from your Republican and Democratic opponents?
I think I would work with our state officials to stop passing mandates that are unfunded. I don't think that we should have to have a mandate that we, that's not funded by the state. If they're able to pass it, they should be able to fund it. I don't think that we should have to follow any mandate that's not funded. I think that, you know, working with our state officials and our senators and stuff like that, you know, they should be aware of these mandates when they come down. Maybe that we should get like, you know, some kind of waiver from these. I don't know how the hell it works, to tell you the truth, but I don't think they should give us mandates that we can't fund.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamo, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
I don't agree with any state mandates. I think it's big trouble. Private investment is where it has to be. Smaller government is always better. And the answer is that you have to make some noise down in Hartford. I had in the past. It took six years to change the state liquor laws and it was huge throughout the country. But I went down there for six years and pounded on that table until they listened to me. And even the government got on, governor got on my side. So I think the answer is going down to Hartford, being loud, and tell them what you want.
Thank you, Mr. Alamo. Mr. Edgar, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Well, I would have to agree with you. We've many, many tough decisions that are economic. But the unfunded mandates, we've already got them to waive some of them and not insist that they be done. And that's been through the legislature. We've lobbied our people in Hartford on those. They've given us time to do it. Now, they were extra cost and they probably were more toward the Board of Education than some, than all of them. Now, we are working with them and we'll continue to work with them. And I'm not sure how some of those liquor laws actually helped the town because there was conflict between the people that wanted it and those did not want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar. The next question for District 3 will be for Mr. Lee and will be asked by Katie.
Mr. Lee, with the high school consolidation coming into effect in 2016, the next elected town council will be making a decision on what will become of the Enrico Fermi High School building. As a District 3 representative, what would you like to see become of the building? And how would you ensure that the constituents' voice was heard in the decision? Additionally, what will you do about abandoned and neglected properties in town, other than that?
Abandoned town properties? There's a lot to that question. I think the next town council may or may not have a decision on the future of Fermi. It won't be until the Board of Education actually vacates the building and turns it over to the municipality that that would formally happen. There is certainly the opportunity to activate the community center working group that the council's kind of had in a, in abeyance right now. There's a laundry list of ideas that are starting to make their way into the council's hands, everything from a big expansion of library services in the community, things like a full-time fitness center that could include the pool and different opportunities for the general public to come and take advantage of. One of the more interesting ones is the co-location of our EMS service here in the property so that there are ambulances stationed on both sides of town at all times. And those are some of the things that the departments are starting to bring forward. I think whenever the town vacates a building, it ought to have a plan in place to either start getting ready to turn it over to another use or be prepared to preserve it. Things that we have in our inventory that are historically significant should be vacated with a plan for some measure of preservation going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Ladd, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
I agree with a lot of the uses Mr. Lee stated, but I think I would talk to the, being a district councilman, I think I would talk to the people in the district and get a consensus of what they would like. And that's more in line with what I think I would support.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. The next question will be for District 4. The question will be for Mr. Kinsler and will be asked by Matt.
An audience member asked, how did the candidates respond to that of major decisions that affected the town as a whole are made behind closed doors, such as security guards in schools and the so-called improvements to Brainerd Park?
Thank you for the question. It's a good question because, you know, the people are the ones that tasked us to do this. There are things that we do on a, on a weekly, daily basis that are small, that you don't see, that we don't have the ability to go out to referendum for everything. And Brainerd Park's an excellent example, a $17,000 improvement. Every time we did something like that, we couldn't. However, I will say that the neighborhood was canvassed personally by me. All the departments were brought in and we're going to have some minor improvements over at Brainerd. And the idea is to look at it every year, get more opinion and more opinion, and make those changes. When you talk about the guard program, I am in favor of involving the public on those larger issues all the time because they directly affect every resident in town. And it's important because they are the people that put us here. We are here to make the tough decisions, but we need that input. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsler. Mr. Denny, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Well, first of all, I never was canvassed for anything and I live about 20 doors away from him. Second of all, I believe that there is a lot of behind-the-scenes things that are going on and that's what our campaign is all about, more open government, speaking more to the people. And again, we'll go back to addressing the armed guards in schools. It took about 12 or, let's say, two weeks to decide that we're going to put armed guards in schools. And then the public was involved with certain meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. And now, we will return to District 2. The question is for Mr. Alamo and will be asked by Jacob.
Mr. Alamo, a successful revitalization of the Thompsonville District has been a longtime goal of the town. You have stated that a plan to aggressively market homeownership benefits and incentives as well as enhancing business development in the area is an important part of a revitalization process. As a resident of Thompsonville and a local business owner in the district, what specific kinds of benefits and incentives do you think are needed to attract both potential homeowners and businesses to Thompsonville?
Teaville is a tough area. As you know, 38 years ago, urban renewal, urban destruction, I should call it, came in and tore everything down and put no more investment into that, to that district at all. And again, I have to look at all of District 2, but Teaville needs work. The riverfront is the big thing in a train station. If we can get the riverfront going and people make investments and we're taking down Higgins School, putting up new buildings, that would bring more investment. Dollars bring dollars. It'll bring business. It'll be an opportunity for jobs. So we have to get away from the old 38 years of doing nothing in Teaville, but it's come a long way. And a big part of it was crime. But we have a police chief who's done a fantastic job down there in Teaville and the crime rate is way, way down. That'll start bringing investment. Putting money into Teaville is the only answer to get Teaville going. And again, any investment in Teaville, any building, is money for the whole town of Enfield because it goes into the tax base. So an investment in Teaville is an investment in all of Enfield.
Thank you, Mr. Alamo. Mr. Edgar, you will have the first rebuttal. You have one minute.
Well, you're right. Revitalization has taken a long way. But part of it is when we revived, revitalized the town before, we tore down some businesses along Main Street. For instance, Thompson Hardware and a drugstore and some of those, a clothing store. Now, to get them back is a challenge. Now, we have community development who has funds to assist businesses to come in there. But the key to it is to retain the businesses you have. I know of a business right now that's looking for his own building. If not, we're in danger of losing that business. Our people have got to go out and retain the business, never mind just get the new businesses in. Now, key to that, I still say, and I will say again, is light rail. You don't need a Taj Mahal. All you need is a train stop and a place to board and unlike similar to what Windsorlax has.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edgar. Mr. Christmas, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
I think a lot of problem with Thompsonville right now is that we're overridden with social services. I think that a lot of our absentee landlords fuel the fire in that area. I have come up with a plan that our absentee landlords should have the same thing like the rest of the town has when they're a business owner. I mean, you have too many police calls called in for your I mean, you have too many police calls called in for your security going off too much. Maybe if we implement on these absentee landlords that they have the police brought to their house for troubled tenants, that maybe they should be fined. Maybe the absentee landlords will start looking at their tenants better, maybe, you know, bring in better tenants. Maybe it'll scare off some of these investors that like to come down and charge high amounts of rent and bring these social service people in there so and they don't take care of the building. I think it's a lot of the reasons why we're losing business down in Thompsonville. Businesses don't want to come back down because the type of people that we attract to Thompsonville, to the Thompsonville part of town. I've lived there for many years. I lived right on Lincoln Street. I lived across the street from homes.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Thank you. Your time is complete. The questions have now completed, so we will now go to the closing statements and we will begin with Mr. Christmas.
My first time doing this, so I gotta bear with me. I'm running, the reason why I ran for town council is because I see a lot of troubles down in Thompsonville. My vision for Thompsonville is a lot different than a lot of people's down in Thompsonville. I think our Thompsonville should be brought to be back to the charm of the village, not of a charm of a city. I think that we've got so many social services jammed down our throats in Thompsonville that we can never get our Thompsonville back to where it was and where it once was. As a landlord down in Thompsonville, I've done a lot screening my tenants and making sure that I have the right tenants. I've bought properties on my street just to get rid of some of the riffraff and bring back in good tenants. And I have actually went out and brought people into Thompsonville to buy houses in my neighborhood so my street would be a better place to live. I think a lot of the problems of Thompsonville are self-inflicted. And I think that if the town council gives us any more help, I think they're going to destroy us even more, even more, do more harm. I think that we need to attract new homeowners down in Thompsonville. I think that we need to get more people responsible for the properties.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Your time is up. Next, Mr. Bosco, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you, everybody. In the last six years of being on the council, we did some great advances in the town of Enfield. We were able to keep taxes stable for five years. We spent money like it was our own money. We made sure that we did no harm. We advanced the town. In doing all this, we, when I first got on, I said, "The town needs to be run more like a business." In my business, savings means profit. In a town or municipality, savings means profit because if we save a dollar, that's another dollar we don't have to tax you people. And we just have to look things a little bit wiser and a little bit different ways of doing things. Like I said earlier with the rubbish trucks and the mowers, we ended up getting something that cost us nothing that will save us money down the road. And that's what you need to look at. You need to look at how you can save money by spending money wisely.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco. Your time is up. Mr. Alamo, you are up next. You have one minute.
Thank you. I am, I'm in favor of all public safety, whether it's EMS, fire, or the police. In regards to the armed guards, I believe it should be reconsidered. To my two opponents, I am the only one that has been able to lower taxes anywhere in District Two. If you elect me to the town council, I will fight to keep taxes and oppose any unnecessary taxes increases. I respectfully asked for your vote on Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alamo. Mr. Lee, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the panel again for the questions and the dialogue this evening. Also want to thank my wife and my children for affording me the opportunity to be active in local government. This term, I'm looking to run as the District Three representative, which is a change. The last seven years, I've been part of the at-large group on the council. And in being an at-large councilperson, you're serving the entire community. I still have a very deep interest in seeing things occur and some of the progress move forward all throughout the community. But I am prepared to be the voice for District Three and I'm looking forward to that opportunity and would ask for your vote as well on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Kinsler, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you again for affording us this opportunity. My job in the last two years is to work for the taxpayers in my district. I think I've done a very good job at holding the line and looking out for you. And I've done it. I can go to sleep at night with the utmost integrity in every decision I've made. I would like my opponent to go down to the reporter at the end of the session and tell her all about the behind-the-scenes things that he's referring to. I don't know what that is, but I'd be happy to interview her as well. You have a choice to make next week on Tuesday and I hope that you will give me your support again and vote for me so that I can watch out for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsler. Mrs. Craviets, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the Enrico Fermi Youth Vote. You truly have done a wonderful job. And in closing, I'd like to say, you can see that the Democrats and Republicans do agree on many things and disagree on some. But most importantly, we need to have a town council that can work together for the better of the people. If you elect me, I will always be accessible and take the time to be there for you. I will look at each issue and make sure that I have all the facts and make sure I have all the concerns of the residents. I will work with the taxpayers and consider all of us stakeholders. As a council member, I pledge to do what's right for the people. Please remember on November 5th to vote for me, Jill Copiel-Craviets, and Red Edgar, Charlie Ladd, Ed Denny, Sidney Mangini, Tom Arnone, Pat Crowley, and Gina Sikala. Thank you very much for coming to the debate and I look forward to your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Edgar, you are next. You have one minute.
I'd like to start by saying to the panel, your questions are excellent and well thought out. I'd like to say briefly something a friend of mine has said many times. I owe this town everything that I am and everything I have been. I listen to my constituents. I serve for their best interests. I try to be fair and honest. I will continue on revitalization, light rail, and a double track. It'll bring more people and attract more businesses. I know that we have to retain the businesses we have as well as get new and I will work towards that. I look for a stable tax rate. I will say something nobody else has said. If there's enough votes to open a charter, I will vote to open a charter. I will continue to resist armed guards and if possible, I will revisit that issue the next time. I'm appalled that your teachers weren't even considered on that.
Thank you.
And briefly, on the crime issue, and I know I'm over, I am concerned. There's still time. But I don't see any more walking patrols or any more bicycle patrols downtown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edgar. Mr. Ladd, you are next. You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Again, I would like to thank the students and organizers of the Youth Vote program. It has been an enjoyable experience and a great civic exercise for all of the people involved. As a councilman, I'll make sure that my constituents have access to me as often as possible. I will share important issues with them to get a consensus of their thoughts and then vote accordingly. I also believe that community development can make our town prosper. I will try to promote our community development agency's suggestions because I feel that these ideas will help provide more employment and a more level tax base for our citizens. Tonight, I tried to follow my mentor, Liz's advice, and speak honestly and from my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. And finally, Mr. Denny, you have one minute.
I'd like to thank the panel, everyone, for coming. I've learned a lot walking the streets with this campaign, talking to people, knocking on doors. A lot of people have not seen a politician knock on their doors or talk to you if I have spoken to you at your home or put some information. I gave everybody my number. My passion is Enfield. I'm not in this because for any reason. I love the town. I've been here my whole life. I've seen it grow from about 8,000 or 9,000 people to what it is today. I thank you for coming again. Please vote for me, District Four. And I'd like to thank Dave Alexander for showing me how to go door-to-door and knock and campaign. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denny. And with that, the district position section of the debate is now complete. We will have a five-minute break and we will now have a five-minute break and then when we return, we will have the at-large positions take their place on the stage. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. We're trying to fill in the five minutes here for the people at home that's going to be watching this. And in order to fill in the five minutes, we're going to talk briefly with a couple of people from the Fermi Youth Vote Committee. So, we have Josh Robert and Sarah Tremblay here and they're going to explain to us a little bit about what it takes to put this kind of a debate on. Josh, how much time have you guys put into this in order to get ready?
For the past four weeks, we've stayed about, after school, for about two days, two days a week for about an hour, so.
And Sarah, what did it take to come up with the questions? Now, obviously, you have to have some knowledge of our town to do that and it's not probably something most people think of from high schoolers that they have that knowledge. So, what did it take to get the background to make the questions?
It was difficult because, like you said, we didn't really know a lot about it. So, we did a bunch of research on like the town websites and Mr. Allegro printed out packets for us. And like me and Josh were partners, so it was hard for us to like think of questions at first. But once we like found all the information, it was not too difficult.
Very good. Is it the kind of thing that you think that other students in your high school would find rewarding to do?
I think it's really rewarding because you get to learn about the candidates that are running for your town council. And it's rewarding because you have a part in who gets elected because you can vote yourself. It may not count for, until you're 18, but it's just rewarding to find out more about the candidates themselves.
And Sarah, we don't want to get into politics. We don't care anything about who you might vote for or not. But did any of the candidates surprise you with their questions tonight? Just kind of a yes or no a little bit, but without getting into detail.
Some of them, yeah, but I don't know. Yeah.
There's a little curve there. I know. Okay. We're going to be doing the at-large candidates next. This is an interesting group in a respect, you know, the last candidates all had a particular type of time, part of the town that they represented. These candidates all have the entire town that they're supposed to be tasked with. Do you think that that brings a different perspective to what it is that they would be doing? And we'll go back to Sarah this time.
Yeah, because they have to focus on like a broader idea now. So, instead of focusing on like certain little things or like certain projects, it's kind of like bettering the town like altogether instead of just in their small districts.
Very good. And when we're done tonight, is that it for you guys? Are you done or does Youth Vote do something beyond this debate?
I think now that we're educated about the candidates, we can go vote ourselves based on how we feel the candidates have presented themselves here tonight.
Very good. We've still got a couple more minutes here. Here we go. Is this the first time you've ever been on television?
Uh, yeah.
While talking, yeah.
It is a little different sometimes than you might think that it is. I can guarantee you though, your parents are like, "Wow!" right now. Okay, I think we're going to get off so that the candidates can get seated and not have us interfering with them. Josh and Sarah, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well, we'll begin the next round shortly, so please could everybody get back to their seats? Okay, we will begin the next part of the debate right now. So, I ask that the audience please settle down for a little bit. We will begin the next round of debates. Please? Okay. So, now, we have moved on to the at-large positions for the town council. And let me identify them for you from left to right. For the Democrats, we have Mr. Thomas Arnone. We have Mr. Patrick Crowley. Mrs. Gina Sikala and Mrs. Cynthia Mangini. And for the Republicans, we have Mr. Scott Copen, Mrs. Donna Suzyk, Mrs. Carol Hall, and Mr. Greg Stokes. Same setup this time. We will begin with the one-minute introductions of each candidate and then we will go into the two rounds of questions. The person that the question is directed to will get two minutes to answer and then an opposing candidate, which has been predetermined, will get a one-minute rebuttal. So, we will begin with the Democratic side for the opening statements and Mr. Arnone, you have one minute.
Good evening. Thank you, Enfield Youth Vote Committee and the Enfield Public Schools for hosting these debates. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Tom Arnone and I'm running for council at large. I was raised to believe in community service and the positive difference that each of us can make. I have had the honor to work in our community on leadership positions with civic and nonprofit organizations. I'm a former member of the Board of Education and president of the Service Town Council. I believe honesty, integrity, fairness, and ethical behavior are the hallmarks of not only a good leader, but of a good person. These are also the guiding principles in my own daily life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I forgot to mention too, just a reminder to keep the microphones closer to you so that everybody can hear. I know we had that problem with the first half of the debate. Okay, so now, Mr. Patrick Crowley, you have one minute.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I want to congratulate the board, the panel here for doing it on a night the Red Sox aren't playing, so thank you very much. We can all be here and enjoy this. I'm a five-term councilman. I have lived my whole life here in Enfield, born, brought up. I've raised seven children. I still have four children in the school system. Very proud to be a part of Enfield. Very proud to be sitting as council and very proud to be proud of youth in Enfield, their lives. I'm president of Enfield Ramblers. I coach youth basketball and I coached in the Thompsonville Little League. Being part of the community is a positive thing and I've always taught my kids that and I hope to continue to do so. And with your And, uh, with your help in upcoming election, uh, I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Mrs. Sikala, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you. Thank you to the youth vote for hosting this debate tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Gina Sikala. I am running for town council at large, the only new kid on the block out of the four of us. Um, I've grown up in Enfield, been here most of my life. I am now raising my family here. I am the lucky mother of two young children, wonderful children, and I am the proud military wife to a wonderful and supportive husband. Um, I bring to the table an honest, straightforward, and respectful attitude, coupled with the want and the ability to listen to the people. I don't have a personal agenda. I believe that this town deserves the best. It needs change, and I want to be part of that change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Mangini, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the students, faculty, and all those involved in organizing and inviting the candidates to participate in this debate. My name is Cynthia Mangini, and I have lived in Enfield for over forty years. I'm a proud mother of three and grandmother of two. I'm a graduate of Enfield High School. I've earned my Bachelor of the Arts from the University of Connecticut in Political Science. I work as a professional realtor. I'm seeking reelection as a councilman. I serve as liaison to numerous committees, such as the Enfield Food Shelf, Enfield Revitalization, Prison Liaison Committee, Fourth of July Celebration, and the School Security Committee, to name a few. In addition, I'm a current, uh, board member of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and I serve as the chair of the Education Subcommittee. Also, I'm an advisory member to the National League of Cities, and I am currently vice-chair of the Finance Administrative Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your time is complete. Okay, uh, Mr. Copan, you're up next. You have one minute.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, thank...thank you all for being here this evening, and, uh, special thanks to the panel for putting in all the time to put this together, and, uh, we appreciate the opportunity. My name's Scott Copan. I'm, uh, running for the first time for the council-at-large position. I've served on the Enfield Town Council for the past, uh, ten years...I'm sorry, ten terms, twenty years, as the District Three Councilman. And, um, so this is new, being able to run across, uh, the entire town. I've also had the pleasure to serve as mayor for the past three terms. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Enfield, a nineteen-eighty-three graduate of Enrico Fermi High School, just had our thirtieth high school reunion. Uh, community service is...is what I'm all about. Uh, love the Fourth of July Town Celebration, have been on the committee for years, and serve as chairman, also involved with, uh, the Enfield Rotary and countless other service organizations and social service agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Copan. Your time is complete. Um, Mrs. Suzak, you are up next. You have one minute.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to, um, thank you for having this debate and giving us a chance to voice our opinions. Um, my name is Donna Suzak. I'm a lifelong gra...um, resident of the town of Enfield, a graduate of Enfield High School. My two children are graduates of Fermi High School. I also have my degree in science from the University of Connecticut. I work currently as a office business manager for an engineering firm. I am married, I have two children, and I got my start in volunteering when my children were in the school system. I was in there tirelessly, working and doing whatever anybody would ask me to do. That grew into becoming a member of the building committee for the expansion of the elementary and middle schools. I'm now serving my second term on the Board of Education, where I am on the finance and curriculum committee, and on the leadership. I'm asking, um, let's see, I have a few more things. I...I like to say that on the Board of Education, I have worked tirelessly to...
Thank you. Mrs. Suzak, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mrs. Hall, you're up next. You have one minute.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Carol Hall. I am running for town council at large. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the students for inviting us all here tonight and affording us this opportunity to share our ideas and the vision for our town. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I have had the good fortune to reside in Enfield all my adult life. I've been married to an amazing man for twenty-eight years and have three wonderful children and five wonderful grandchildren. Um, I, uh, they have...my...my whole family has chosen to raise their families here, which says a lot about our town, I think. I want to thank the constituents for giving me the opportunity to serve as a town counselor for nine years, and, uh, in that time, I've had the great good fortune to serve under two of the most amazing leaders, Mary Lou Strom and Scott Copan, which I have learned a lot from these...these wonderful people.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Hall. Your time is complete. Uh, Mr. Stokes, um, we come to you now. You have one minute.
Okay, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Appreciate the panel and the school for putting this on. Uh, once again, two years ago, we missed it because we had the storm, and, uh, I'm glad we can have it this time. Uh, I'm...my name is Greg Stokes, and I am running for council at large. Uh, my wife and I here live in Enfield. I've been here for about eighteen years. My wife is a lifelong resident, uh, and, uh, we raised our children here, and, uh, now we have four grandchildren, two that are in the public schools, one's in fourth grade and one's in first grade. And so, uh, we have a great interest in our community. I have served, uh, on the town council for the last two years. I was on the Board of Ed for four years, two of that as chairman. I've served in many other volunteer areas, such as the Fourth of July Celebration. I'm the marketing director, and with the Enfield Rotary and other service organizations. I look at this as being, uh, public service, and, uh, and to me, uh, nothing more fulfilling than to serve your community in whatever facet, whether it be political or not political. I count this an honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes. And we will now go to the question portion of the debate. Uh, we will start off the questioning, uh, with Mr. Arnone, and the question will be asked by Chris.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Arnone, you have experience as both a Board of Education member and a town council member. What do you see as the most pressing issue regarding our town's education? And also, how you work on the Board of Education on such these issues, and what is the town council's role?
Thank you. Uh, being on...I was...served on the finance committee at the...on the Board of Education, so I did learn a lot about the finances with, uh, the board. Um, with that being said, one of the most important things for the town council and the Board of Education to do is have dialogue with each other, be able to talk to each other. We don't know everything. We hope that staff and Board of Educa...Education can sell those issues to us so we can vote on them. Um, and that's one of the meat...one of the key things going on right now with the Board of Education is, of course, the Enfield High School renovations. Um, the...the steam wing is an important wing, first one in the state of Connecticut. Very proud to see that happen. We have a committee together now, and that's where the Board of Education...uh, the board and the town council will work together with...as liaisons to make sure that committee functions properly, to bring them the best high school we can possibly give you and your, uh, in the future, children coming into that school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. Mr. Stokes, uh, you have a one-minute rebuttal.
Uh, I think that, uh, the key thing for our educational system, although we do have the high school being built, and we just implemented full-day kindergarten, which I've been proponent of for many years, and I'm thrilled that it's being done. I...I think the key thing for us is to look at education as a community as being holistic, that understand that early education is a key. Uh, I have a grandson that's going through speech therapy. Uh, he's only two years old, and I'm so happy that we have, uh, the ability to have that here in town. And to take it from preschool, from early education, all the way up to high school, and then preparing our kids for either college or vocational. So I think we have to look at everything holistically and...and guide our children all the way through the process. So when somebody says, "What's the most important part of education?", it all is. Um, and you get them early, I think you're able to help them, but also provide them some great choices in the high school, too, so, holistic.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. The next question will be for Mr. Crowley, and will be asked by Jacob.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Crowley, recently the town passed a user-based sewer fee for residents. Mr. Cobbler, our town manager, told the Hartford Current in a recent article that the residential average annual sewer cost in this two-tiered system would cost a hundred and twenty-seven dollars per household. In your candidate profile, you stated that you do not believe in making promises to lower or raise taxes, and would rather listen to all information regarding town needs and expenses before making a committed decision on such issues. This being said, why did you support this decision to implement this new fee?
Well, one of the things we did do is we...we got a lot of information about this. Um, Enfield was one of five or six towns in the state of Connecticut that did not have these fees implemented. Um, we have a sewer plant that is in dire need of renovation, uh, close anywhere from a thirty to thirty-five million dollar project. By implementing these fees, we become eligible for...for grants and funds from the state of Connecticut in the realm of approximately ten to eleven million dollars. Um, and that's money that the taxpayers of Enfield won't have to pay. Um, if we didn't...if we didn't join this system, uh, that money wouldn't be available to us. So that was one of the big reasons for me to support this...this part of it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Hall, you have a one-minute rebuttal.
Uh, Pat...Pat kind of touched on a lot of key points. Um, I think the most important one is the, uh, the fact that we are one of five cities left in the whole state of Connecticut that still has an ad valorem tax, uh, way of, uh, looking at our sewer system. And the big, huge self for this...for me personally as a counselor was the millions of dollars that are available for doing a user-based system. It's...it...and in the end, it saves the taxpayers a lot of money. So this was really the only answer for me as a counselor.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. The, uh, next question is for Mrs. Sikala, and will be asked by our panelist Katie.
Mrs. Sikala, as an elected town council member, you will be in charge of an annual budget that not only tells us how much money the town will spend, but also decides where the town will spend it. You are a strong proponent for improving and investing in our town's education...education system. You have stated that this kind of dedication to education will not only benefit our youth, but will also attract more families and businesses to Enfield, which can in turn benefit the town financially. With costs of new state mandates like Common Core and the new teacher evaluation system, how do you plan to appropriately fund our school systems to take on the costs of these mandates while still having room in the budget to make the improvements that you envision? And how do you plan to...to budget these costs while at the same time keeping our taxes at a reasonable level?
Thank you, Katie. Um, very good question. Education is key. That is what I...I believe truly that the key to a successful and prosperous community is education. So I do want to work very closely with the Board of Education to properly and adequately and responsibly invest in our children's education and in the school system in Connecticut...I mean, sorry, in Enfield. The more we invest and the better we make our school system, the more families will move here. More families will move here, the more businesses will want to open here. The more businesses that will open here, the wider our tax base will be. The larger our tax base is, the less we will have to dig into the residents and the taxpayers' pockets in order to get money for the unfunded mandates, Common Core, the, um, teacher evaluations that are coming down. Unfortunately, a lot of these things are coming down from state and federal governments, and we're not getting the proper funds, so Enfield has to foot the bill. We have to budget properly. Unfortunately, in the last six or so years, there hasn't been any long-term fiscal planning. We've done short-term budgeting, not long-term, so now we're left in the hole with no money. So what we need to do is properly and responsibly go through this budget, figure out what are their priorities, and try to really figure out where we need to spend the money, where we can save, and not kick the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Mrs. Suzak, uh, you will have a one-minute rebuttal.
Okay. Actually, for me, coming from the Board of Ed to now deciding to run for town council, I bring with me the full understanding of the impact of what Common Core and what the teacher evaluation and every other unfunded mandate comes, but I have a little bit different way of looking at it. I look at it from the fact that first thing we have to do is we have to control our labor contracts. What I saw first thing on the Board of Education was that the pay increases to municipal employees has outpaced the ability for the municipality to pay. That has to be controlled. Once we control that, then we can start to control the growth of the Board of Ed budget and keep the programs in place that the students need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Suzak. The, uh, next question will be for Mrs. Mangini, and will be asked by our panelist Matt.
Mrs. Mangini, you have stated that one of your top priorities as town council member is to improve the overall quality of life of Enfield citizens. Please list three things you will do to improve, to achieve this goal for all Enfield citizens. If there is a cost associated with these improvements, how would you go about funding them?
It's a very good question. The, um, first, um, that I would like to, um, continue, you know, to support would be our educational system. Uh, we did implement full-day kindergarten this year. We're very fortunate to be able to go forward with that. I would like to see that continue. I would also like to see more programs along those lines, such as the KITE program, the Key Initiatives to Education, uh, be a little more, um, functional, a little more well-funded, um, for our children, our preschoolers. We need to focus more, I think, on the younger, um, age group, um, for education. I would also like to put some focus on our adult daycare. As most residents are aware, uh, we just celebrated twenty years of our adult daycare, and those are individuals that are residents, um, primarily from our town, that, um, so desire a healthy environment to recreate and to enjoy their, um, times, their...their days. I would put a focus on that. And a third option that I would like to, uh, look at would be improving our social services. Our social services department is stretched to the max, and I would like to see us, um, better assist our, uh, programs, um, so that we aren't, um, pulling them in eighteen different directions as we have been. They're doing a phenomenal job for our, uh, people of our residents, but I'd like to see more attention paid there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mangini. Uh, Mr. Copan, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. The, um, definitely on the quality of life, uh, there's three issues. Um, you mentioned three. I can probably come up with a laundry list, but first, and it was a question earlier during the district, uh, debate. I think, uh, Fermi High School, once, uh, we've...are in our consolidated high school, will make an excellent community center and library. It's one of the needs that have been addressed to me over the years on the...on the town council, and it provides us that opportunity. Uh, it is up to the...the Board of Education to turn the building over to the town, but if they choose to do so, uh, we could make this a first-rate community center and library. Recreation along the river, both the Connecticut River and the Scannick River, is a, uh, quality-of-life issue. And third, we talked earlier about the commuter rail and, uh, transit-oriented development in Thompsonville, and it will benefit, uh, our entire community as well, and, uh, bring different amenities and opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Copan, your time is complete. The next question will be directed for Mr. Stokes, and will be asked by our panelist Chris.
Thank you, Peter. An audience member has asked you, Mr. Stokes, this question. Sitting here, there is a bad sound system, poor parking, lots of lights, broken seats, and potholes in the driveway. How have you let the capital improvement fund deplete so much that normal repairs can't be done as needed? And also, how do you plan to improve this?
Okay. Uh, I appreciate the question from the audience. Um, obviously, I came in tonight, I sat down the front row down here, and this seat kind of fell through, so I was also one of those that noticed this. And, um, and obviously, as we drove in, I do know that some work's being done at the parking lot that's been scheduled, I understand, for the...for the...especially the driveway. You know, we look at capital improvements, and, um, and basically, for council members, um, we have to prioritize certain things that come in. Uh, we depend greatly upon our administration to begin the prioritizing. We pay them to do that, and they do a great job. And when they bring it to us, we have to set priorities based upon, uh, what the funding is there and what we're...uh, what we can do. Um, and so, uh, I think that every year, we...new term, we begin. We begin with, uh, goals and what we want to accomplish, and definitely, uh, some of the stuff that was mentioned here tonight can be part of those goals as we sit down as a new council. At the same time is, um, you know, we, uh, we look at Fermi High School here, and although, as the mayor said, we're not yet, uh, getting into this discussion about, uh, what's going to happen to Fermi if the Board of Education turns the building over to us. Uh, but at the same time, I think that, uh, if that happens, then investment into this building will be more targeted. And sometimes doing some things too early until we know that decision, which I know they're probably going to make for the next few months or whatever, uh, that'd give us some direction of what to do here, so...but we heard you, and...and obviously... But we heard you, and, and obviously, we wish we could fix everything and make them to, you know, perfect standards. Things break down. Things get old, buildings get older, we get older, and there's only so much you can do at a certain time, but we definitely will make it a priority to talk about that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Arnone, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, we had a same problem, too, in our Public Works Department, where his budget didn't have a line item for improving trucks over the years, and, and that, to me, was just outrageous, and that's why it cost us one point two million, one point three million dollars to, to help bring our vehicles up to, up to grade. And this is, we've got school roofs, too, that are going to come out in the next couple of years. We have a lot of capital improvements that we have not gotten ready for, that we have to start doing that, and we have to start doing it, unfortunately, making up from past years. And again, it's kicking the can down the road, time to pick the can up and run with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. The next question will be for Mrs. Hall and will be asked by our panelist Jacob.
Mrs. Hall, you have listed that one of your top priorities is to put together another roads referendum to improve the condition of the town's infrastructure. You also stated that said roads referendum is needed in order to finish roads that were part of the 2010 referendum but were not finished. If this new roads referendum is created, how will you ensure the taxpayers of Enfield that the job will be completed? And can you explain why the completion of these unfinished road projects is so important to the health of local communities in Enfield?
Thank you, Jacob. Yes, we, the next referendum that we're going to have to look at will be another roads. We had Roads 2000, we had Roads 2010, and the way that we put the lists together for the roads that were done when we actually went public to try to sell these referendums was that certain roads were going to get done within that referendum timeframe. I think with the increases in all the paving materials over the years, unfortunately, some of these numbers that were predicted many years ago didn't get us through those referendums. So that's why we're in the spot today that we have to look at doing another referendum. And I think what we have to do with this referendum is look at the years, and, and it goes back quite a while. I was on the council, the first roads referendum we did. I think we have to prioritize the roads that we missed, going back to the first, first roads referendum. I think the priority has to be the roads that were promised originally in the first referendum, and then the second roads referendum, and then finally, whatever roads are left. So I think there's a priority that has to take place in this next one, and I think the citizens are going to be looking for those commitments from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mr. Crowley, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, the roads, we have some, some roads that are absolutely fantastic in this town, and we have some roads absolutely horrible in this town. The bad ones are real bad. We need to, we need to make those roads safe, number one. There's, there's certain sections of town that the roads really, in my opinion, shouldn't be driven on. We have talked with the Public Works, and they are prioritizing those roads at this point in time. Anything through the next referendum that is, that is set up, I, I believe, as Councilwoman Hall said, should be prioritized. Go back, look at what we didn't do, and sell that in the next referendum, and stick to that policy. I think that's important that we do that. But we also have to make sure that we save room. It should be a two-tiered system, so the, the ones that are real horrible need to get done first. And like I said, we have quite a few roads in this town that, that need to be done right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. The next question will go to Mrs. Susick, and will be asked by our panelist Katie.
Mrs. Susick, a member of the audience asks, given that the school consolidation was advertised to the citizens that the new high school would be a 21st century school, do you support that cuts are being made without wide public knowledge, like the cutting of the number of classrooms less than the number of teachers? And how do you plan to make sure that the new school will truly be a 21st century school?
All right, well, currently, I'm serving as the liaison for the Board of Education. I am diligent about going to every meeting. We have user groups set up, and within those user groups, we are looking at everything that the staff is going to require, and we are also looking at, not necessarily what we need today, but what we're going to need three years down the road, even five years down the road, to make this school a, a, it's a STEAM-based high school, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. It's an integrated program. It's how all of us work. It's how we know, all of us don't perform our daily duties in silos where we do a little bit of writing here, a little bit of math there. Everything is integrated, and technology is integrated into that. As a manager of an engineering firm, we're also responsible for the training of engineers once they graduate from high school, so I'm quite aware of what kind of training is required after graduate degrees from college and from high school. I think that some of us, we can't really see into the future, but we can kind of try to grasp what we're needing today, and I think I've been an integral part in the school system of putting technology into the classrooms, be it back in 1989, when we first put the first Apple One, Two Gs in the classrooms, to putting the iPads in and backing and finding the money through finance and through savings of consolidation of our elementary schools that financed the consortium that put the iPads into the classrooms, into the hands of students, and hopefully into the future of what our classrooms will look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Susick. Mrs. Sacala, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. If there has been cuts made regarding the school consolidation or the, the new school being built, perhaps we could have some community conversations or a specific community Q and A for the school being built. Perhaps the community can get more involved that way. Regarding the fact that there has to be cuts done, you know, unfortunately, sometimes people's eyes are bigger than their wallets, so we need to really sit back, do our research, do the due diligence that these people and our town deserve, and figure out what can we afford to do now, what in that school can be put off, and what can we put in later. So prioritize and figure out what can we really, really afford now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacala. And now the final question will go to Mr. Copan, and will be asked by our panelist Matt.
Mr. Copan, last year, the referendum vote to fund the new consolidated high school at Enfield High passed, with the first phase of renovations to Enfield High scheduled to begin this summer. Close to 10,000 residents voted in favor of this consolidation, as it could save the town an estimated $2 million a year. What are your plans for the Fermi High School building, and will the town continue to maintain the athletic field even when the school is not in use?
Thank, thank you, Matt. I was a big supporter of the, of the referendum last November, and I believe all of us sitting up here were big supporters, and that's one reason why it passed overwhelmingly, is that we worked together as a town, absent political parties, and saw it as the, the number-one need, came together, worked together, and, and it paid off last November. But opportunities abound as well. Once you make a decision on Enfield High School, what do you do with Fermi? And I mentioned in my previous response that if the Board of Education decides to turn the school over, and they make that first decision, it is up to the Board to decide whether they want to continue to use Fermi as an educational building. But if they don't, and the previous Board had indicated to the town that more than likely they would turn it over to the town, so we began, we began our thinking, our process, to say, what could we reuse Enfield? We don't want Fermi to turn into another Higgins that we're tearing down in a, in a month or so. And the idea of the community center and the library, Henry Dutcher, our Director of Libraries, has told us repeatedly the need for more space at the central library. A library no longer is just stacks of books. It's technology, it's meeting spaces, and we need additional square footage for the library. And it would mean a referendum. A community center, the town could definitely use this facility quickly as a community center for the town, including the fields. The fields are for public use. The pool would be for public use. This auditorium would be for public use. So a first-rate community center and a library, and that would require a referendum. And Councilman Lee earlier mentioned a need for EMS facilities on this side of town.
Thank you very much, Mr. Copan. Your time is complete. Mrs. Mangini, you now have a one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. And again, I agree with most of Scott's points. However, I think in addition to the library possibility to a community center, there are many, many different options that we could look at, but I think the most important piece here is to bring it to the people, to bring it to the referendum. You know, the fields also would be part of it, you know, providing the Board of Ed decided to turn it over to the town. But I think before we got to that point, I'd like to see some community conversations. Years back, we did have many community conversations where we heard from the people in different community areas on what their thoughts were with different aspects of their parts of town. I would encourage a community conversation, maybe one or two, and then, once we had that vetted, go to the referendum part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mangini. The questions section of the debate is now completed, so we will go to the closing statements, and we begin with Mr. Arnone. You have one minute.
I'm a hard-working problem solver, and I'm committed to preserving the communities we, that we know and love. We must be a positive force to attract attention of businesses, families, and others looking for a community with outstanding workforce and excellent public schools. We deserve a town government that's open, transparent, and spends our money responsibly. I want Enfield to be a place to live where my children want to call home and where senior citizens can enjoy the fruits of their labor. I'm running for town council because I love the town that I live in. Our Democratic team needs your support, but most of all, we need your vote. Please vote Row B on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. Mr. Crowley, you are next. You have one minute.
Once again, I'd like to thank you guys for doing just a great job up here, and I'd like to thank everyone, both sides here, and also our district members. Anyone that decides to run for, for council or Board of Ed or any office really has the best of the town at heart. I feel that way about myself. I, I love Enfield, I love living here, I love raising my family here, and I hope I continue to do so with your support. Myself and my Democratic colleagues on the town council and on the Board of Ed are asking for your support, and hopefully, everyone gets out to vote. Whether you vote for us or not, please get out to vote November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Mrs. Sacala, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you again for putting on the debate. This was a very interesting and eye-opening experience, a little different being up here. If you would ask me two years ago, would I ever get into politics, my answer would be no way. I am not a politician. I'm, I'm a resident, I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer. But you know what? I can help this town. I can, I can help lead us in the right direction. Enfield is a wonderful town, and I want to help us give back the pride that I believe some people have lost here. If elected, I'm going to be the voice, the voice for the residents, their eyes, their ears, and their voice. I don't have a personal agenda. I can't promise anything that I know that I can't keep, and I won't, but I can tell you that I will work my hardest for the residents of this town. Enfield deserves the best, and I'm going to try to give that to them. A minute is not really long enough for, for me to tell you all of my views on some of the key issues, so feel free to ask me later. Please get out and vote. Myself and my slate mates would love your support on Tuesday on Election Day.
Thank you very much. Your time is complete. Mrs. Mangini, you are next. You have one minute.
Thank you. Again, thank you again for the opportunity from the youth vote. Over the next two years, Enfield will continue to face tough economic times. Our residents will be forced to address such issues as providing quality education, high school consolidation, road infrastructure repairs, and addressing our social service needs. These, along with other equally important matters, will require funding. For Enfield to be the best that we can be, it is imperative that we place our values where they belong. Specifically, we need to continue to support and fund education, provide for our elderly and less fortunate citizens by keeping our social service is in the forefront. We must put a plan in motion for funding our capital projects. If re-elected, my priority will be to continue working on improving the overall quality of life for all of our Enfield residents. Quality of life and fiscal responsibility go hand in hand. In order to be successful and meet these goals, I'm asking you to support me and my team, Jill, Red, Charlie, Ed, Pat, Tom, and Tina.
Thank you.
Sorry, Gina, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mangini. Your time is complete. We now go to Mr. Copan. You have one minute.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Over the last six years, I've had the opportunity to serve as, as the mayor, and one of my goals was to make sure that as a unified council, we brought government closer to the residents. We have public communications at meetings, and we want to hear from you. We hold quarterly district meetings throughout town, open topic, we want to hear from you. We've expanded the coverage of Enfield Television, took funding, support of everybody, and we've done that. We show our meetings live, and then you can catch them on YouTube. We work, me, my team, this team, we all work across the aisle, because we know that as residents, we all need to work together to solve our common issues. We goal-set, and it's an open process. I'm a hard-working guy. I've served for twenty years on the council. I want to continue for another term. I ask that you support my Republican team, Donna, Carol, and Greg, and appreciate your support on November 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Copan. Your time is complete. Mrs. Susick, you are next. You have one minute.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for hosting us here at the debate, and also, I'd like to thank my family and friends who really are a support mechanism that any person who serves their town as an elected official needs. They work tirelessly behind to allow us the latitude to immerse ourselves into the town and enjoy the activities that I think that if we weren't here as elected officials, that we, we might not see everything that Enfield has to offer. So on November 5th, I'd like to see everybody come out and vote. Thank you for voting for me, for my team, and hopefully, we will be able to move Enfield into a community that everybody says that's where I want to live.
Thank you, Mrs. Susick. Mrs. Hall, you are next. You have one minute.
I want to thank the panel for hosting us this evening. I consider it a great honor to serve the constituents of this town, and I take this role very serious. I don't think, I look down the panel, and I look at the panel before, and I, I don't see any individual that has any secret agendas. I think all these people up here have the best interest of Enfield at heart. I know I, for one, love this town and have made it my home for myself and all my children and my grandchildren. So I want to, I want to thank my family for all the support for nine years on this council. It's been very, there's been tough times, there's been good times, and they've put up with a lot, so thank you. I love you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. And finally, Mr. Stokes, you have one minute.
All right, I get to go last here. As I mentioned, my wife is a lifelong resident here, and so she was born here. I chose eighteen years ago to, to move to Enfield with my two children, who at that time were senior high school and a freshman in high school. And when I came here, I completely fell in love with this community, and so I started volunteering to get involved with many areas that I thought I could help in, and I found every time I did, it was a very rewarding experience. Some years ago, I was approached about running for office, and so I ran for office, and this has been a rewarding experience. And I think the reason why it's been a rewarding experience is because of the people you work with, so I just wanted to say thank you to all my colleagues here, and, and although I'm going to say the same thing, please vote for Row A and for our team here and for our Board of Ed team, but I just want to say it's, it's great to be part of Enfield, and we've got some great people and leadership in this town, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. And with that, the debate for the at-large candidates are, is complete. We would like to thank all of the candidates for their participation, as well as the audience who joined us today. A few people we'd like to thank, first off, Mr. Tony Legrow, Mrs. Amy Whitbro, and Mr. Sean Patrick Crane for their help advising all the debate, as well as all the Fermi students who took their time to volunteer and help put this thing together. We'd also like to thank Principal Paul Newton, Dr. Schuman, and the entire Fermi staff for helping to host this event. If you'd like to ask any private questions with any of the candidates, most of them are staying behind, you can talk to them, and we have freshmen outside if you'd like to ask anything to them privately. This debate will be available on ETV multiple times between now and Election Day, and will be available at any time on YouTube, the Enfield Television YouTube channel. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Enfield. Have a good night, and don't forget to vote on Tuesday, November 5th.